Okay, so seeing the presence of a quorum, I'm going to call meeting of the Amherst School Committee to order at 6:45 PM. For those of you who have been sitting in the audience for the past 45 minutes, we really appreciate it. We had a regional school committee executive session just prior to this, so thank you for your patience. Tonight's agenda is pretty packed, but we're starting with approval of minutes of January 22nd, which was a joint session, and then also February 7th. So I will give the committee a moment to take a look at the minutes if they haven't already done so. Once again, reminded of the incredible amount of work that goes into preparing these minutes on a regular basis, especially when we have so many meetings back-to-back. So thank you, Ms. Westmoreland. As soon as the committee is ready, I will take a motion.
I move to accept the approve the minutes of January 22nd and February 27th.
February 7th.
7th, sorry.
Do I have a second? And actually, I'm sorry, Ms. McDonald, so we've got three sets of meetings minutes here. So we've got the joint session, which we participated in. So there was a meeting on the 22nd that started at 6 o'clock, then we moved to the Amherst School Committee at 7:30, and then it's actually three.
So I will amend my motion. I move to approve the minutes of our joint session on January 22nd with the regional committee, the Amherst committee meeting on January 22nd, and the Amherst meeting on February 7th.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Demling. Any comments, edits, questions? All those in favor, say if I could raise your hand? Great, thank you, unanimous. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have committee announcements. Do we have any announcements from the committee? Mr. Demling?
So another meeting, another update on the national privatization war against public schools. I just wanted to give a brief shout-out of support and approval to the West Virginia teachers who successfully enacted a strike to stop charter school legislation in their state. That was very nice to see. And on the heels of the Los Angeles strike, the Oakland, California teachers are now on strike. Again, a central issue there is privatization, a district that's gone 26 percent charter. And following the LA strike, there's now fast-track legislation in California to increase transparency for charter schools, so that's good. Less encouraging, though, are the proposed changes to the charter school reimbursement formula in our own state and Charlie Baker's H1 proposal. This doesn't change the funding formula at all to make it more equitable, and it decreases the reimbursement to schools. And the real challenge here, I think strategically, in terms of trying to defend public schools from privatization, is that the strategy is really to take advantage of all the attention, all the good attention, all the righteous attention on the foundation budget formula. So whenever you see updates in news articles about education reform in Massachusetts, it's about that funding battle, which is good, and this is just part of that bill that's sort of chugging along. So it's going to be a challenge, I think, for schools to keep that on the forefront, to make sure that that does not get passed as part of the overall budget bill. But secondly, that we should be aware of as a committee and that the public should be aware of as well.
That's great, thank you, Mr. Demling. And I know that Tracy Novak from the MASCE has been on top of this for some time here in Massachusetts, has been sharing updates through social media and elsewhere, so she's our regional representative, which is just a great contact for Massachusetts. Any other committee announcements? Okay, with that, then I will open up public comment. We are in public comment period. If anyone wishes to make a comment, please come up to the microphone and state your name, and you have three minutes. Okay, seeing no public comments, you may close public comment. Thank you, Ms. McDonald. We have our handy countdown clock over here, but I guess we don't have to use it tonight. And with that, we'll move on to superintendent's update.
Sure. So I'm doing it orally again tonight. So just four or five things I want to share. So in terms of legislative efforts, I shared at the region last night that I was one of the presenters in an event for superintendents in Hampshire and Franklin Counties, talking about the impact of state funding formulas on Western Massachusetts schools in our area. I think I mentioned also that Friday, there's another event of Connecticut Valley Superintendent Roundtable, includes Hampden County as well. And Mr. Demling has agreed to join me as a school committee representative, so thank you at that meeting to communicate our needs to our local legislators. So thank you, Mr. Demling, for making the time for that. Couple other things. So tomorrow, no, Thursday, excuse me, Ms. Cunningham was invited, and the district was invited. The Commissioner, Riley, is visiting UMass Amherst. A little flyer, if anyone wants to see it, I didn't put them out to save trees, but he's doing something called Change the World, Become a Teacher, recruiting a new generation of educators to reflect the energy, curiosity, and diversity of public school students. So he's trying to do events at some of the university campuses, and so our district in Springfield were chosen to accompany him on this visit to talk to folks. Ms. Cunningham and Mr. Gordon, who you met a couple months back, are going to represent the district at that event on Thursday afternoon at UMass, which is great. Follow-up on the ADA audit presentation from last month, I think it was last month. Three visits have been scheduled with the consultant group to come in. CPAC's been notified, as well as administrative leadership, to work on how to prioritize that list. So those meetings are all in the next two and a half weeks, so we should be able to come back to you next month with some more concrete thoughts. I know we're talking about capital later tonight. It's still at the open placeholder level, because we just need to schedule the meetings, but I think the first one actually is within the next week. So they're going to come back and work with us on how to do that and how to make a multi-year plan to address the accessibility needs in our buildings. Fourth thing was that, I know we're talking about this later, but just quickly referenced that I appreciate staff members who came to the MSBA Statement of Interest Listening Sessions that we held. So we held three sessions, one at each of the three elementary schools. I thought the feedback was very helpful, and I'll share that feedback with Mr. Logue, who's the facilitator, so he can integrate that feedback into the final report. I appreciate Mr. Demling for showing up at the Quaker Farm session, which I thought was well-attended, and I thought the conversation was robust. And the last one is next week, I guess it's after, we'll meet next Monday, but March 6th is our, something that started last year, which is having a kindergarten registration information night. So it's not necessarily where you just go and register your child, it's actually with all three of our elementary principals inclusive, and then we're inclusive of Pelham as well, to share about our schools, what we offer, and give families and children the opportunity to meet some of the leaders in their schools before they register and join us. There was really positive feedback last year from families. We had about 65 people come last year. It was a little tight in the Quaker Farm library, so Ms. Chamberlain is nice enough to be welcoming us to Fort Rivers Library, which is a little more spacious, given the population that came last year. So we'll have an advertisement for that in the bulletin this week as well. I think that's my update for tonight.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the superintendent? Thank you, Dr. Morris.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is an issue that I wanted to raise with the committee, and it's titled "On the Agenda: Length of School Committee Meetings Per School Committee Policy (BEA)." I've had a number of conversations, I think, with some individuals on this committee, also with community members, and with Dr. Morris, with staff, and in particular, just in relation to the length of our committee meetings, many of which tend to go over their stated agenda ending times by quite a bit. And, you know, I think we all have sort of resigned ourselves to the fact that that's just kind of the way that it is, right? We, you know, we sit down and we have to deal with a lot of really, you know, weighty topics, oftentimes have a lot of, you know, really good conversation and discussion around these issues. But the reality is that there's a very, you know, important side effect that ends up happening. I think we have staff here that are here from early in the morning, that are forced to stay, you know, way past their normal end times. We have an impact on custodial staff. We also have an impact on the public that attends our meetings, and of course, on us, right? And so I think for all of those different reasons, it's just been weighing on me for some time now, and I wanted to bring it up to the committee, because it was much to my surprise that we actually have a policy around this. And the three, you know, plus years that I've been on the committee, not once have I ever seen this policy or had it raised during a committee meeting. And so I thought, you know, this is probably an important time for us to bring this up, right? I think to both, you know, show, lead by example about how we could actually hold more efficient and timely meetings, but also hopefully set the stage moving forward, I think, you know, for any future school committee members or school committees, but also future superintendents and staff. Being able to set reasonable hours and times for our meetings actually makes a lot of sense, right? And I don't think we can, you know, argue much against it, although I'm happy to entertain any difference of opinions. But I guess I wanted to bring this to committee to just see, you know, what people's initial responses were. I don't know if you've had a chance to read the policy, and I have some ideas on how we might be able to help cut back on some of the longer meetings that we've had, but I just wanted to see your reactions and, you know, if people are willing to give it a shot. Mr. Demling?
I mean, I'm looking at 11:27 PM for the adjourn on the meetings. I don't know what you're talking about, Chair Donius. Yeah, I mean, it's one of those things. I think we've talked about this before. It's one of those symptoms of public service and school committee, that it could just, it's this infinite well of opportunity, and the meetings, it's like nature abhors a vacuum, right? If we allow ourselves the possibility of going to 10 or 10:30, 11, then we will go to 10, 10:30, 11. I think most of the time, it's not wasted time. I think it's quality, the conversations are good, you know, the input we're getting is good, it's just unbounded. So, yeah, I mean, a couple of things. I did like the technique in the policy of, once you hit two and a half hours, that you actually have to have a motion to continue the next half hour. So it's not like, oh, you have to adjourn at two and a half hours. But I think that it's actually a good built-in reminder that, oh, you know what? We actually shouldn't be obligating us and the public and the staff to stay forever. You know, we ought to be being efficient. I think it's been hard the last couple of months, given the extraordinary amount of additional meeting time that we've freely taken on for the building project. I mean, we knew that going in, we talked about that at the time, I think, in mid-December. And so that just is what it is, but I think that's kind of part of it. Personally, I would be more amenable to more frequent but shorter meetings. I find myself after three hours, not nearly as effective a listener and an absorber of information as I think I should be. So I would, you know, it's like I would rather meet twice for two and a half to three hours than once for five to six hours. But, yeah, I certainly think that it's something that we could do a better job haranguing.
Yeah. And I think, you know, honestly speaking, just going back and reviewing some of the video from our previous meetings, which I did in preparation for this conversation, you know, we could probably all do a better job of being more efficient in how we deliver our remarks, right, and how we have our questions. And I think even oftentimes, we, you know, we call on educators and staff to make presentations, you know, reminding that, you know, it's my job as a chair to help remind the, you know, who's presenting and the committee, when they've surpassed certain times, right? So just so we can keep the conversation going and we're not getting stuck in one spot. But I do think that we can all do a better job of just, you know, being a little bit more disciplined around that, you know, and making sure that we're stating to that. Mr. Nakajima?
Yeah. When we talked about this the other day, so what I'm going to say was sent from earlier to you anyway, is, I mean, a couple of things. I mean, one, some of it you actually saw me do last night, because I was trying to model this at the regional committee, of asking, what's the point of a particular, that sounds wrong, what's the objective of a particular item on the agenda? What are we being asked to do that evening? And then focus, and then is, you know, how is this sequence within other activities or meetings? And then trying to discipline what we do around what's actually being asked of us at that particular moment. I want to, I'm just saying, from my view, that is always a useful exercise, because one of the biggest problems we have is we open up an item, and it seems like we could almost, like the aperture is so wide, we could go anywhere with it, yet the reality is frequently, either it's a discreet presentation, it's an update on something, there's a specific vote that's being asked, or in fact, there's no vote, and we're actually going to have another 15 minutes on it next meeting. And once we are aware of that structure, then I think we have to impose the discipline of saying, look, we only need 15 minutes to talk about this tonight. And if there's substantive work to be done, it's got to be contained. If there's a relevant subcommittee, or maybe there should be a relevant subcommittee, they should be taking on the work of crafting and revising something or bringing it back. I also think that, and again, you saw me do a little bit of this last night in another meeting, where I'm using the actual parliamentary procedure to start saying, look, we're actually doing something here, so let's actually get the motion going, let's get the rules of debate going. I know that can feel sometimes it's artificial or formal or imposing, but it actually has a really good rhythm to it, of getting people to think, oh, that's right, we're doing this thing, we're on this topic, are my comments germane, and are they concise? And I think, depending on what we do, I would be open to the, I mean, it is maybe, I don't know what this would be, it's like ending the filibuster in the US Senate. It could be like the third rail. We could have a clock or actually a structure for discussion where people are limited to a certain amount of time, and, I mean, I don't mean the public, I mean us. And we just, we go through it. And if we discover that we needed more time, then we say, we ask ourselves, well, is this something we're supposed to do, this meeting, or, you know what I mean? We question what we're doing rather than just blowing it out for another hour.
Yeah.
Ms. McDonald?
I totally agree on that. One of the things that I've struggled with frankly, when I first started on the school committee, was understanding these agendas. And what you just said about being more specific about what we're trying to talk about specifically around a topic that's listed on the agenda, I think can help us a lot in focusing the conversation and deliberation that we have at these meetings. So, you know, sabbatical vote, well, unless you know the history, or, that's probably a bad example, but, I don't know, maybe I'll just stay with that one, even though it's not a great example, but unless you have the history and know sort of the lingo and the abbreviation, so you're not going to know what that means other than, you know, the roof at Fort River. Well, is it, what does that mean, and what precisely are we going to be talking about? And I think sort of laying that out in the agenda upfront can help focus us and keep us and not talk about, you know, the shingle over there that fell off, but we're talking about the project to replace it, or, you know, something along those lines. It also can help the public in understanding sort of what we're going to be talking about, so that they don't have to watch every single video to know and track what's happening across the time. I will say, I also, I think you said, Mr. Demling, that we have good conversations. So I don't want, like, that's my fear, is I don't want the pendulum to swing all the other way. And I wonder if part of it is we're biting off more than we can chew in our agendas, right? Where, you know, you've given 10 minutes for this topic, but we've probably already eaten up eight of that, so, and yet, not everybody's had a chance to weigh in. So I think, you know, being more realistic in our time setting and the agenda and prioritizing how many of those topics we try to address, and I totally agree with what you said, Mr. Demling, about more frequent, shorter meetings is a lot easier to manage mentally and physically than, you know, these once a month or a couple times a month, five-hour marathons. And a lot easier from a family perspective, so that, you know, future people wanting to join or run for a school committee, it makes it something that's not as terrifying, frankly.
Yeah. Well, I think that there's also, you know, sort of process-related issues in putting together some of these agendas, you know. So the five-and-a-half-hour meeting was also that it was a combined, you know, meeting between regional school committee and the Pelham, you know, and Amherst, right? So it wasn't all Amherst. You know, and I think this tends to be a long-winded group sometimes, right? Like, there's, you know, there's probably things that we can handle a lot more quickly, but, you know, we feel the need to explain ourselves, you know, we kind of explain a lot, right? And so I think that there's elements of that, too, that we try to factor into the agenda to make sure that we are leaving enough time for substantive conversation, but, you know, maybe we have to do a better job of making sure we're not just going on just to hear ourselves talk, you know? I do think that I, you know, taking what has been said tonight can feel like I have enough permission at this point from the committee to move these agendas a lot more quickly and to move, you know, the conversations a lot more quickly. And to really stick to some of these times, too, right? Because if we have set something aside for 10 or 15 minutes, if we feel like we've hit that 15 minutes and we need more time, can easily check in with the group and say, do we still need, you know, we need more time for those, or do we have to bring it back to another meeting later on? Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, so I'm, I think I'm going to illustrate one of the things that happens, is that sometimes if you wait a little bit to talk, then you end up with less time. I would also argue that I think we should try to make sure that the time to speak is evenly distributed amongst the members, and would be very in favor of using a clock to do that. And I'm sure I've been guilty of this on other topics, of being the person to take the first lead and eating up on the time that we have in here. And I'd also like to say that, and, you know, I'm trying not to, you know, make this all about some of the challenges I've been facing with these long meetings as a new mom, but I know that other members of the community, other members of the staff have met some of these challenges, and I know that sitting for this long is difficult overall, but it's particularly difficult for me right now as a nursing mother. So I think we either need to set a hard end time for this, or work in a half-an-hour break to accommodate some of the needs of our school committee members. And if we can't do that, it's effectively shutting me out from participating in these meetings. And I would hate to tell somebody not to run for school committee because they're considering being a parent. So, but that's kind of how it's been experienced by me right now. And I know that other members of this staff, public, everybody's been having these challenges. So, and I'm sure that other people have other things that have gotten in the way, so I don't want to be careful about that. But I think we either need to make sure we're held to these times, and I'm a little concerned if we have the vote and only one of us is experiencing one of these personal things, it could be difficult to, you're in the minority, so therefore, how do you end up, you know, how to accommodate the needs of the minority as well? Because I don't think we'll ever have a majority of us facing the same issue at the same time. So I don't know if that's something to think about, but as you think about it, I think it could be a host of things. I'm sure I'm not aware of all of the challenges that people face, but that's my personal experience.
Dr. Morris?
Yeah, if I could just briefly jump in, I think one of the things in talking to my colleagues who have similar split districts, by split district, I mean that everyone on this table, all of you are members of more than one school committee, is there's a natural propensity for what we jokingly call agenda creep. Because you do meet more often, you find more agenda items to add, whereas the majority, if it was one school committee across the state, the vast majority meet twice a month, pre-K to 12. And so they're sort of forced into making perhaps harder decisions about what gets on the agenda, what doesn't. Whereas the ability to have more meetings kind of allows for more agenda items to come up that just wouldn't be sort of possible or advisable if there was only two meetings a month. And so just something to think about, that the multiple-committee thing, it not only adds meetings, but it actually adds the capacity for longer meetings, even though you think it would go the opposite way. It's a really common occurrence. It'd be interesting with Tracy Novak and other MASCE members, I find, but from the superintendent lens, when I talk to others in similar boats, it's not an unusual occurrence that, you know, the outside perspective is, oh, there's three committees, you must have shorter meetings, you're only talking about pre-K to six. And the reality is not, is actually often the opposite. So it's, the problem you're all citing, I just want to, I don't know if it makes you feel better or worse, is not unique to our model. I think it's actually a part and parcel of some of the challenges of having a school committee members on more than one school committee simultaneously.
Yeah. So how about this? So I think I'm hearing from all of you agreement that we, you know, we should take some steps to try to fix this problem before it becomes a bigger problem, and also to make sure we're not, you know, excluding people from this. I would propose that the superintendent, myself, and perhaps our vice-chair get together and think through some parameters, and then we can share that back with the committee at the next meeting. Does that make sense? Okay, great. Thank you, I really appreciate it, and hopefully we can get to a place where these meetings feel like they're operating much more smoothly. Okay, next item on the agenda is budget hearing. So I'm looking to Mr. Mangano.
Thank you. So this is the second meeting in our budget process where we open it up to the public and get their thoughts. I'm going to do a quick update on the budget, which has changed a little bit since the last time, and then Dr. Morris is going to go over the proposed additions and reductions, and then we'll open it up.
Mr. Mangano, I'm just going to pause you for a second. I'm not sure if everyone can hear you, I'm having difficulty, okay?
Sorry, I'm a little sick.
No, that's okay, yeah, I just want to make sure everyone can hear you.
Actually, I'm sorry, just to give a little context for the public, so, do you want to, just about how budget hearings work?
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. So we'll do the presentation, yeah, Mr. Mangano and I will present, have discussion from the committee, and then if the public, it is another opportunity for the public to offer feedback and commentary, so it does get reopened up. So just, if anyone's here and wanting to comment, there's that opportunity to come.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, much like the region presentation last night, the major change from the first time we presented the budget is the health insurance increase. So we were projecting a 6% increase in health insurance, and the actual increase we got from MIA was a .6. So that was a very positive development for the budget. The proposed budget is still $23,838,854, which is the guidance that we received from the Finance Committee at the time. It's an increase of 2.6%, or $596,489. It includes net additions of $239,594, which we'll go through in a second. And the chart below is similar to last time, except the health insurance number, which just shows our level of service increases and decreases. The decrease for health insurance is a little greater because the premium came in, the premium increase came in lower. So we'll turn over to Dr. Morris, he's going to go through the additions and reductions.
Sure, and I think I'll do the same thing as I did last night at the region, which I'll just briefly go over these themes and then get into the weeds of it, so that the school committee and the community can, you know, have all they need to offer feedback. So we did look at this, I think, similar to some of the other districts, as we're having a particularly solid year. We're able to make some investments, but we also know that some of the health insurance savings is a one-time savings. So we're trying to be conscious that we don't anticipate having this strong a budget year annually. So we tried to make kind of logical investments, some that we would be long-term, and some that we knew we need to, things that we need to do, that we can do and do for a year and really solve some problems that we feel urgency around. So you can see they range from instructional materials and curriculum to more specific on English language education. We have a kind of significant amount of facilities. I want to be really clear, this is on the operational side. Later, we'll talk about the capital budget, this is actually on the operational side of facilities. So just want to make that distinction, but I'm not bleeding into capital, this is actually on staffing. And also responding to our students' needs and incoming students as well. So the proposed additions, this is adding back, it's a small portion of the procurement officer, it was a budget cut last year, with all that we're asking for on capital, and hopefully receiving significant amount of from the town, just its support for the business office, given the role that, given how much procurement there will be, that we want to make sure Mr. Mangano has some relief from the amount of procurement work, which is kind of tedious, time-consuming work. So that's a small add. Communications support for central resources, this is adding back of another budget cut in the past, clerical, additional clerical position. It'll do a couple of things, want to reorganize the entry, which we've got a lot of negative feedback on this year, we had to, because of a budget cut change where people check in in the office. It clarifies support for human resources to build their support and their responsiveness to staff members, which is critically important. And it also adds more support for communications more broadly. So adding the additional staff member allows us to reorganize and kind of more narrowly tailor roles in central office. School committee compensation, so this is part of the new charter, is that school committee members, Amherst school committee members, receive compensation, so this is adding it to the budget. Instructional material supplies, stipends, and consultants, this was a part of a budget reduction last year, and we've kind of really been challenged by supporting the instructional materials our staff need, and so this is increasing that line back to exactly where it was. The next line is really looking at math, social studies, and health, so this is focusing on three areas. So this is focusing on three areas where either because of a curricular change or standards change as it relates to social studies and health, based on what we know. We've talked about this a couple of times this year, that the health curriculum is ill-aligned with what the current needs that we, students have. So this is kind of more in the category of one-time costs that we want to build into the budget to really address some of these changing standards or changing curricula. Increase the FTE of the science garden teacher, that's increasing of grade levels. Right now, it's at K to 2, and this is going up to third grade and integrating that curriculum. We need a little more time from the person that's currently on staff. Co-teaching stipends and professional development, that's an offset for reduction in a position related to this. So this is stipending teacher leaders who are currently expert co-teachers in our schools to take on more formal leadership structures and train their colleagues. Dual language materials, this has actually been talked about more than most other items, so I'm going to, in the name of time, skip over ones we've talked about before. Math professional development, this is related to creating a temporary position for a staff member to be our 6th through 12th math support specialist for next year, given the proposed changes. I know we'll talk about them later on the agenda, but this is the Amherst portion of that role. English language education, the short story is the expectation for doing assessments, state-run assess, state-required assessments has gotten to the place where we really need a teacher leader in each building to help manage that whole process. Right now, it's diffuse and it's not functioning as efficiently, and what that's meant is more days where kids are out of classrooms because we're not scheduling them as well, and this is really tightening our process to support English language learners. The next one down is really, with this need of increasing English language learners, software assessment and stipends for curriculum development. We want to improve our English language learner program, and we need some support to do that. The next one down is to have a position of assistant facility director, and that person's role would be a couple of things. One is to support the, and do, offer training for the facility staff to improve their methods and support their work. Also to support some of the HVAC and larger work that is being suggested in the capital plan. And this is really, you see it's a 1.0, most central office positions are shared between districts. What we're finding is that we are in reactive mode all the time with the state of our elementary buildings. We actually need to build some staff so we can be more proactive, which our current staffing really doesn't allow for. Is it okay to keep going, or you want to?
Just, I guess, one quick question. The assistant facility directors, is somebody who would actually be doing some of the maintenance work themselves, or would they just be an administrative position? Not just, but, you know?
Yeah. The answer is both, you know, and because, and I want to speak for Rupert, I know he's here, but because Rupert has an extensive HVAC background, it might be the case, and we've still have to work out all the details, where Rupert himself might be more, a little more on the ground, given his background and expertise, and this person could do some of the ordering, you know, and some of the other work that Rupert, that bogs down his time. But depends on the skill set of the person, right? Because Rupert has that skill set. The next one down is literally on the ground, is the school your van driver to need, but someone, you know, our positions are generally part-time van driver, part-time maintenance, and this would have, we'd be looking for someone with a specific HVAC experience because of the ongoing needs we have. Next one down is, we have a student entering who's got needs that require a full-time nurse, so that's what that is. The next one down is our after-school program. Sometimes we need more nursing coverage than we currently have, so even though it's after-school programs, we still want to support the health needs of our students. Next one down is human resources recruitment and stipends. I think I mentioned this earlier, which is really to support their capacity. I think there's been a lot of feedback at multiple committee meetings to make sure that we increase their capacity of their staff to take on more of the efforts, and this allows for more of that. Preschool, we spoke about this one, the dollar amounts changed. So this is planning an exploration to expand preschool. This is trying to collaborate with the local Head Start, which is community action. It was $10,000, but actually the town has agreed, and not agreed, they've offered to split the cost of that with us. So they're planning on proposing a $5,000 increment, and that makes our increment go down. And actually, as I spoke about it when, last month, we want to have this partnership with the town. And I want to be very public, it wasn't an ask from me, it was actually Mr. Bachman, the town manager, saying, no, we should do this as a shared financial venture, it's a long-term shared financial interest. So that's why that number changed from what was originally proposed. Spanish courses, this is ongoing work that this year's been funded by the grant that we've received, but it's continuing that work into the next year, working with HCC, excuse me, Greenfield Community College. Next two are CPAC and LPAC supplies, which I think we spoke about last time. The next one down, we have a special education stabilization fund that was set up two years ago, two years ago. And because of our, you know, this is a beneficial or positive financial year, it's actually a good year to put funds into that, so that when the rainy days happen, we have funds that we can use. And this is for, funds for when we have students who enter our district with unanticipated needs that require a financial investment, that we don't have to go into reserves or some other fund. Special education, this is increasing the special education secretarial staff. We've looked at their workload and feel like we really need to increase that to support their work, to support special education families and staff. The next one down is, we have part of this funded, so it's a .5, but this makes a whole position for next year, which is a bilingual special education teacher, specifically thinking about the dual language program and ensuring that we have services that can be delivered There's a modest add to a communication budget based on feedback and things we've spoken about, and a modest add to a school adjustment counselor position to make it a 1.0, it's currently a .7 position at Wildwood. So those are the adds.
Can we pause just for a second?
Oh, sure.
So are there any questions in the committee about any of the additions?
Sure.
That Dr. Morris has just reviewed?
Can I, Ms. Spencer? A logistical question. We don't have it in our paper copy. Is it on the iPads, this presentation? And if so, what's it called?
It should be pushed to your iPad.
It's page 36 of the packet PDF.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And also should, the full document should also be in your iPad.
I just got it.
So for adjustments, staff turnover savings, this is just that we have staff retire, and generally, there's some cost savings the following year. Curriculum ELE, there's a bit of an increase just based, there's more, every couple of years, we look at what percentage of English language learners are in each district and how much of the central office staff is associated with them. So it's a minor adjustment based on the Amherst Public Schools having a higher percentage of ELL students as compared to all three districts than it had previously. Human resources, again, they've looked at their software programs, and they don't need all the ones they have, so it's being more efficient with that, so there's some savings We looked at the Title I grant, which is currently, for both Amherst and region, has been put to only expend in Amherst historically, and that's because early, we believe in early intervention. And this positive fiscal year is shifting some of those grant funds to the middle school, which we spoke about at the regional schools. So this is an offset to that. So we're not losing any staffing at the elementary, we're just taking on funding slightly more of the Title I funded, well, what is currently Title I funded intervention staff. These are specialists who work with regular edu, primarily regular education students who are, we want to support to be at grade level in reading and mathematics. We have two fewer classrooms, just basically, we have a very large sixth grade, so we don't anticipate as large a kindergarten coming in, so that's just a natural attrition kind of thing. Health insurance, there's a reduction in staff. This is, I don't know if you want to?
Yeah, it's just based on the overall reduction in staff, based on the classroom reduction, and also the next one that Dr. Morris will talk about. So we're building in some health insurance savings from fewer plans.
And the last one is just that we have a number of students who, in this current sixth grade, who are entering middle school next year, who require paraeducators to access their curriculum, so since those students are going, the need and support will also head to the region. And budget reductions is the instructional coach, that's around co-teaching, which we're replacing with internal stipends. Wildwood's, the paraeducator is to increase that school adjustment counselor to full-time. There's an offsetting reduction of paraeducator position at Wildwood. So, you know, it's actually, comes out cost neutral. And so I also think it's worth noting, because there may be a concern about this, that, you know, what happens to staff? That's a lot of paraeducator reductions, and, you know, I'm glad Ms. Fay is here. So we've had initial conversations about making sure that it's not an overall reduction in paraeducators across the districts. And so we've worked on having a flexible model where if there wasn't six or seven paraeducators who left the district for whatever reason, because they want advancement, you know, within the district, outside it, that we would make sure, ensure that none of those paraeducators lose positions or their seniority, that they would, you know, they could look at the regional piece, because it's not a licensure component, there is, the way there is with unit A staff members. So, well, it looks like we're reducing paraeducator positions, which is true in terms of the actual people behind that. We're ensuring that everyone stays whole, who's in good standing in the district. And so you could see, to Mr. Mangano's point, it actually ends up being a net reduction of 2.73 positions. That's why there's the health insurance increment, and the total additions add up to about $240,000 this year.
Mr. Mangano, did you have a question?
No.
You gave him the luck, I wasn't sure.
I had something on my mind. I think, I think you've already, it looks like the, I guess, what I was worried, not worried, but just thinking about is, this is a good year. If next year wasn't a good year, do you feel like the adds are things that are, obviously they're necessary, but they're sort of being managed well enough? And it doesn't, to me, I think the answer is already yes, with the possible exception of the assistant facilities director, where that's something where there's just such a need. Presumably, you're making a statement that we just got to do this, even though it's obviously a new position, and that's a cost.
Yeah, and I had a similar question, actually, I guess phrased slightly differently, which was, what's the long-term effect of these additions, right? Because I think that, you know, moving staff, even if we're not necessarily technically adding them, or, you know, if there's just their job title is changing, or their duties are changing, once that position has been shifted over, there's still, that, you know, that job's still being done by somebody, right? So if that gets taken away, because it's a, you know, tough budget year, and we have to move them back to another location, what happens?
Yeah, so I think, you know, we tried to look at some of these, you know, in terms of new curriculum materials and training. We're looking at, you know, there's a couple, that's an example of a one-time cost. We're not buying new health curriculum indefinitely. And in terms of sixth grade math, we're looking at that as, you know, some one-time costs. Even the position that's supporting sixth through 12th grade mathematics, we're looking as not a forever type of position. So we did try to think of what we could do, given the kind of awkward situation we're in that way, and be able to do that. When we talk about choice in a little bit, you'll see that we're, our choice fund is very healthy. So we do actually have a fair bit of, there's some limit to how much choice we can bank for a rainy day, but we do have a fair bit, we're, fiscally, we're in pretty good shape around that. So we tried to be cautious about adding things that were needs and also being conscious, we don't want to add things that we cut a year later. And as best we could, we tried to balance those items. You know, like, for instance, the preschool's one that that could, that cost could expand, right? Where this is a cost to study, you know, how the district could partner with Head Start to expand preschool access in town, right? I don't know what the resolution of that is, but it could be the case that I come back a year from now and saying, we figured out this model, and here's the cost attached to it. So we want to be very realistic about that scenario as well.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Anybody? Okay.
So just quickly, so as Dr. Morris mentioned, this proposed budget includes that, a one-time contribution to the specialized stabilization fund. So that'll get the balance to about $200,000, which is what we'd like to sort of have as a sort of the carrying level going forward at the elementary level. School choice funds supporting this budget are down to $500,000, so it's below what we're expecting to bring in, so it speaks to the flexibility that we'll have in the future with school choice. As everyone's mentioned, that it's a good year, so the health insurance decrease, which is making this a really good budget, is not going to happen again. So we do have to be mindful of that going forward. And same thing, the other thing making this budget year really positive is the charter of choice tuition. That stayed level this year, which made our increase from the town higher than in the past. So that probably won't happen again, it won't happen the same way in the future. So those are just things that were our considerations when we were developing the budget. I think one more slide, and then, okay. Yep, so again, this is just, you've seen this before, but it's updated for the new amount of choice that's supported in the operating budget. So the green line is the fund balance in the school choice reserve fund. The blue bar is the, what we're proposing to support the operating budget each year, and the pink orangey bar is the revenue coming into the fund. So for FY '20, you can see the revenue coming in is about 500, right now projected about 540,000, and what we're proposing to use is about 500,000. So the fund balance is growing a little bit.
Okay.
I think that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Mangano. Any questions, comments, feedback from the committee before we open it up for the budget hearing? Mr. Demling?
So Sean, just having been through all of this and put all the details together, you know, we're going to be at this legislative thing on Friday, talking about advocacy, and so I think, I'd asked you this question before, maybe at a different meeting, but in terms of like the big ticket items from state-level funding that underfunds our district, like charter reimbursement, circuit breaker, I'm spacing on two or three of the other ones, but when you think about what are the things that most impact our district financially in terms of state-level funding, what are the things that are at the top of your list?
Yeah, so at the elementary level, it's a little different than the region, because the regional transportation piece doesn't come into play. So I'd say, again, it's the charter, charter tuition reimbursement aid, is the circuit breaker reimbursement, chapter 70, minimum per pupil aid that we get, that goes out to the districts that are affected by that. And because it's the town, sort of all those funds go into like a general pot that the town dishes out to everybody, so really, anything that improves the financial situation of the town is positive, because that just means there's more in that pot that could potentially increase what the schools get. But in terms of school-specific ones, those would be sort of the three big ones that are realistic, I think.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Okay. So with that, we are going to open it up, the budget hearing. If anyone has any comments from the public, you are welcome to come to the microphone, state your name, and feel free to make your comments. Okay, seeing no comments for, the budget hearing is now closed. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And folks are also welcome to send their thoughts and questions and comments via email to schoolcommittee@arps.org if that is so preferred. Thank you very much, Mr. Mangano and Dr. Morris. So the next item on the agenda is capital planning.
So, ooh. Wow. How'd that happen? There we go. I'm not sure that that, I think we have enough paper copies for everybody, and I'll see if I can do that. Let me introduce the topic. So Rupert Roy Clark's here, and so what he did was take the, what you saw at the previous meeting, the capital planning, he is now, a month in, I think we decided today, four weeks in, to his role, and he's done some additional analysis on the capital plan and kind of reprioritized some things, added some things, and so he created a document that tries to highlight what's changed. So it does look at the five-year capital plan like you've seen before, but he tried to have a narrative component, as well as a kind of an Excel with highlight, highlighted cells component to share an update and want to share rationale.
Do you want to just begin those out now?
Yeah, please.
Because that way, while people can take a look, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I can, you just give me a couple, and then, yeah.
You can just, get the stack, we'll pass it around.
Yeah.
Thank you, great.
Yeah.
Over here. I don't know who I'm on, Sean, or no? Who am I on? I think I'm logged in. Yeah. So these were emailed to the committee earlier.
Yep. And I'll see if I can get it up on the screen.
You should all got these in your inbox.
I'll work on getting them on the screen, but you can. Hi, everyone. I'm Rupert Roy Clark. And so what I did was I took the most recent version that you had, which was a January 11th version, and looked a little bit at the timing. There were a few items that I could revise to be smaller, smaller capital costs. There's some stuff that I thought we could put off for a little while, to kind of spread things out a little bit better. So what I did was I wrote a narrative, school by school and all school, of the changes that I made from that time. And attached to that, you have two pages of spreadsheet, which, the yellow highlights are the changes that I did, and then the blue highlights that are in that spreadsheet are items that had been taken out from the January 11th capital plan, with, under the assumption that we would be winding down to one elementary school building instead of the two at Wildwood and Fort River. So some kind of big-ticket items like roofing and paving went back in, not for the coming fiscal year, but sometime in the next five years, we're going to, we're going to need to address those if we still have those buildings. So that's the general overview. To give you a little bit more detail, we have some exterior door projects at Wildwood and Fort River, and I felt that after we looked at the projects, we could do it for less money, so I reduced those. Also, the UNIVENT replacement in those two buildings, actually in all three elementary schools, I needed to reduce. It turns out that there's going to be some complications in replacing UNIVENTS. It's not something that's easy for us to do piecemeal, spread out over time. We need to make a real study to figure out how we can do it without disrupting the school terribly. So I reduced this coming year's capital ask to do a little bit of planning and push that reduction into the next year, when hopefully we can start doing some of that replacement. Similarly, with the drinking water outlet change in all of those buildings, I spread that out over three years, slightly increasing the total ask, but reducing it for the next year. And lastly, or one of the other important items is, we had in the coming year's capital plan, replacing chillers in all three schools, and after looking into it, I feel that we could push off Crocker Farm at least one year to reduce the big impact next year. So that gets pushed forward a year. Ideally, we would like to replace Wildwood and Fort River next year, if we can get the capital funds. We definitely need to do Fort River as a top priority. The Wildwood chiller, we had a lot of trouble with this past year, we did some major repairs. If we have to push that off a second year, I think that's possible. I'd rather get it taken care of sooner if I can. And the other, the other big item is, I added, I added $50,000 into the interior upgrades to try to take care of some of the air quality issues that have been coming up in some of the buildings. There's some internal work that I need to do, and that seemed like the best line to put it in for now. So that's the quick overview. Maybe I should just open up for questions now.
Anything you want to add, Dr. Morris, to this?
No, well, actually, I shouldn't say no. Sorry, this keeps happening. It's going wrong here. So I just want to appreciate, you know, Mr. Roy Clark's work on this, and I think it's been helpful to have a fresh set of eyes, take a look at what's possible. I mean, I think the UNIVENT, not to belabor that point, was really helpful for him to identify the challenges of replacing the UNIVENTS. It's not like you can take one out and pop one back in just because of the way they're ducted.
It's the way, the way that they're plumbed.
Plumbed, thank you. I was close. And, and so really, taking a look before we ask for capital funds from the town, because we know we're asking for a significant amount of money, to be really clear on exactly what we can do this year and what we really need for further study for future years. So I appreciate that lens, because when, you know, JCPC is hearing all this, I think it's a much more defensible position, and I think we want to build credibility with town, because if you look at it four years out, there's no small, no shortage of asks coming. So I think the more we can have credibility in asking for detailed information, and when we need more detailed information than the big ask, saying that's what we're actually asking for. It's kind of like the electrical piece as well, I mean, I connect those two items. The UNIVENTS and electrical, we know there's potentially problems, and so we need funds to figure out what the problems are and how we're going to solve them before we ask for larger-ticket items.
A couple of items that I, that I sort of passed over. We had a big ask for changing some shingle roof at Crocker Farm, which was $200,000 next year. We're really not having a lot of trouble with that, so I want to push that, replacing that section of the roof out several years to when we're addressing the whole roof, and instead focus on the skylight issue. So I cut that $200,000 in half. I'd put it all in for, for this coming fiscal year, but it is something I think that we could spread out over two years if we need to. The other thing that I didn't mention to you is the ADA compliance, simply had a $50,000 placeholder for this coming year, then nothing into the future. So I thought we should at least put a $50,000 placeholder in every year until we get some more results from that study.
I think my last comment is just as a reminder, as opposed to the regional committee, this committee doesn't formally vote on the capital plan, it goes to JCPC. So any feedback would be welcomed, but it's not, we're not looking for a formal vote, because that's not the structure of this kind of request, capital goes straight to JCPC.
Thank you, Dr. Morris, appreciate the clarification. Any questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Demling?
So welcome, by the way.
Thank you very much.
Great, great to have a facilities director again. It's an exciting time to be one in Amherst.
It is, it's been an exciting four weeks, I'll tell you.
Yes, if you like HVACs and plon roofs, and you have a lot of good stuff to dig your teeth into, so.
I have to beg all my guys, bring me into the, into the macrooms and up onto the roof and down to the basement in the boiler. I want to see the stuff.
So my two questions are related to the HVAC replacements for Wildwood and Fort River in FY '20, and the parking lot pave for Fort River in FY '21. Just because these near-term big-ticket items do relate so closely to the conversation about a potential new building, which has its own conversational threads, it helps for me to understand exactly when and why these things get sequenced. So I think we heard before, I want to attempt to paraphrase the technical explanation, but I think we heard before that the, those two $400,000 for this upcoming FY '20, for Wildwood and Fort River, for the HVACs, are necessary regardless of whether we have buildings coming in the next, a new building that replaces both of those next five or six years. Is that, is that still your, not still your, but is that also your opinion?
Yes, that is my opinion. The problems that we had at the beginning of the school year with Wildwood indicate how bad it is if we have a hot week and no chillers at all. It was really unbearable, and it's really not possible for folks to learn in, under those conditions.
Mr. Demling?
And on the, thank you. And on the parking lot pave for FY '21, if, if there, so there's a separate conversation about statement of interest in buildings and all that, but is that an item that could potentially move and not, that we might not have to do at that level if we did anticipate that there was a decent chance of replacing the building in the next five years or so? Or is that, is that $470 for the paving of the parking lot coming regardless of that scenario?
I haven't studied the parking lot, so I don't know if either of you guys have some information.
Mr. Mangano?
So that was one of the projects we did pull off, when we did the hypothetical of if we have a new building in five or six years, we could pull that off. I think the, when it was put in, it's because part of the parking lot's starting to erode essentially, and it's going to just keep getting worse. But that is one of the projects, we said, if we know we're getting a new building, we could push that off and try to live with it for a little bit longer.
Okay, yeah, I mean, so part of this is, I'll finish, is...
Well, I just want to make sure that we have a chance for others to, so, yeah.
Sure, I'll pause there.
Okay. Does anybody else in the committee have any questions or comments for this?
Hi, thanks again for putting all this together. I don't know a lot about UNIVENTS, but I, they keep coming up in the conversations about the conditions in our schools, and so I guess I just wanted to understand whether or not, I think it makes perfect sense to study something before you go about replacing it, but it seems like these UNIVENTS were tied to the conditions in our schools, and their need to be upgraded is urgent, and that was the message I was getting, and I, again, don't understand the technicalities of it, but do we have any concerns about postponing the UNIVENT replacement? Because it looks like that's what's happening here.
In terms of indoor air quality, in my opinion, the, the existence of UNIVENTS is not core. We have other issues that are contributing more significantly, specifically uncontrolled moisture when we've had roof leaks, and some changes in how we keep and clean the building and keep it safe. So the UNIVENT replacement is something that, in my mind, is something, it's, these are however many years old they are, and they are due to have increased failure rates. And so this is more of a preventative approach by planning ahead of time to replace them instead of having them fail and not being able to use a classroom until we can get parts and they date, you know, months to get parts. So the preventative approach is the way I see it, and the previous plan had, was, was laid out to spread out that work over many, many years, not to do them all at once. So I think putting off the first one of those by one year doesn't significantly change our risk exposure.
Okay. I just have a quick follow-up. I think one of the things that we had heard quite dramatically, actually, in a presentation that the committee heard from educators earlier in the year, was that there had been a couple of these units that had been sparking, or at least one had sparked. So I guess I'm pausing a little bit in response to, your response to her question, just in, you know, if, can we actually put something like that off?
I don't know what happened with the sparking, I'm not familiar with that incident. It sounds to me like a motor failed, and that's sort of part of our normal day-to-day life, is components fail and we replace them. I don't know if that answers your question.
Dr. Morris, and then...
Can you share in a little more detail some of the thoughts you had about why studying the UNIVENTS might be helpful, and some of the complications with replacing them? I mean, some things that you've shared with me might be, might help put a finer point on why you'd want to go about studying these before jumping in.
Sure. So these UNIVENTS have pipes going through them that carry hot water in the winter and chilled water in the summer, and those pipes run all over the building, and generally don't have any shut-off valves, so that you can isolate one part of the building. So you end up shutting down the whole building, draining it, cutting in new valves, refilling it, getting the air out. So it, it becomes time-consuming. And a lot of the pipes have asbestos insulation, so we have some tremendous abatement issues that we would have to deal with, especially if we don't plan ahead. So I really wouldn't want to start that project without knowing exactly where we needed to put valves and what abatement was involved in getting that, that organized to be done in a safe way.
But you're confident that, it sounds like there's not any immediately, you know, dangerous or threatening issues with these, they could wait a year?
Yes, absolutely. That, I would not have, I would not have changed the capital plan proposal if I didn't think that, if I thought we were going to be in serious trouble, I would have said double or triple the amount, because we need the study and to do the stuff.
It's great to hear you say that out loud, thank you. Mr. Nakajima?
I think you might have answered it a second ago. I was trying to figure out whether, how long the study takes, and if you couldn't take some of the money to replace UNIVENTS in this coming year, meaning, you know what I mean, if it only took four months to study it, then you have quite a bit of a fiscal year left, just take some of the money and start replacing them. I think your answer is going to be that you can't do it that way because of the shutting in the system? Not having kids and staff when you're cutting asbestos or something?
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Just the other thing to note is, if you look at year two of this plan, it has a significant investment in UNIVENTS, so even though I think everyone's rightly noting it pushes it back, it actually accelerates, if you think of the original plan, it was 35 each year, this one actually has 100, you know, 120 for Wildwood, 155 at Fort River, and, well, something, you know, I don't want to belabor the point, but, so it actually has a more aggressive amount in FY '21, instead of kind of filtering them out, you know, that cost out over a longer period of time.
What's your sense of that? So if we study at this, the money's in the, in this, next year's fiscal budget budget to study.
Yep.
When would that mean the money would be spent to replace them? Does that mean it'd be done the following summer? Or does that actually mean it would go to bid and be done the summer after that?
My hope is that if we do a study, we can figure out a way to do a big chunk of each building in a summer. So that's why I have a larger amount the following year, and I would, we would only be able to do it during the summertime.
But you think, in other, not to put a fine point, I don't want to put you on the spot, but what you mean then is next summer. So if this summer is like three months from now?
Yes.
You mean 15 months from now, we do a significant investment?
That's, that's my intention.
Okay.
Yes, exactly. Thanks for clarifying that.
Mr. Demling, did you have another question you wanted to ask or comment?
It was just about the parking lot paving, that if we're in the exact same spot we are right now with regards to buildings a year from now, if we're having the exact same conversation, and we're looking at the FY '21 column, and we have the parking lot in front of us, and, and we have, you know, another statement of interest in the MSBA, and we might, we don't know whether we're going to get that until the end of 2020, do we then have to proceed regardless on the, on the parking lot? Or is that, or is that yet another thing that we can, you know, it's, I know it's a hard question, but the pushback we're going to get is, well, tell me exactly what, what we're going to have to pay.
Right.
If we don't get, you know, if, if we don't have any more certainty a year from now than what we do today. That's like...
It's my understanding that we can pour money into patching that will last for part of a year or maybe a year, if we don't do a serious overhaul. So long-term, it's more expensive to do patch after patch after patch, and much more dissatisfaction. I imagine that we could, if there was a good chance of, of an outcome change in the building, that we could cut down that and do less of a good job to buy us a little bit more time. Is that, is that your sense?
It's a lot of to the roots.
Thank you.
So I think that, you know, one of the comments I had made at a previous conversation back in January, I guess now, around the capital planning, is that we are certainly hearing enough concern from the town and from the community about making sure that we can justify all of these numbers, right? And, you know, it's not to say that we're not justifying them, but I think we have to be able to provide strong evidence for how we came up with this, you know, and also that, assuming, we can't make any assumptions at this point about whether or not we will be accepting the MSBA application this year, it may be next year, it may be five years from now, right? We have no idea. In the meantime, we understand we have these issues that we have to take care of, so there's really this difficult tension that we're walking with right now, and I'm sure you're feeling it on a daily basis, I know Dr. Morris is, we all are. And yet, we still have to provide some assurance to our town leaders who will, you know, as Dr. Morris pointed out at the very beginning of this segment, that, you know, we are not the ones who are actually voting on this money. We're sort of making a recommendation and kind of, you know, saying, yes, we agree with this, or we have some concerns. But we have to provide some assurance to our town leaders that this, and this has been well researched and documented, and, you know, is going to do the absolute best job we can with the limited resources that we have. So I know that there's been a lot of work put into this. I feel like, you know, there, there is some, there's enough difference from what we saw in January, that it actually makes me a little nervous. And I feel like, and I totally understand why that might be, and I think in the end, it's probably a good thing, right? We're coming down in some places, we're, you know, we're sort of being more thoughtful with, but I feel like we need to do a better job of documenting that, and this memo actually starts that and lays it out, but, you know, I think even just showing where we were before, you know, providing some references for where this information came from, just writing a paper trail, basically, that helps the JCPC and then ultimately our town fund these projects, because that's really what we want, is we want them to fund this, we want them to be able to say that this, they feel comfortable with this and they feel good about it. And I feel like that's still kind of missing. So I'm wondering if, you know, that Dr. Morris and yourself, if you might be able to, you know, make this a little more robust, to help show the thinking and where it came from, before presenting it finally to JCPC. Does that make sense?
I think it's an excellent suggestion, thank you. So just two, one comment, or two comments I'd like to make. One is, there's, there's, what gets on the list that is, you know, our best understanding of what we need and when, and then the price tag that goes on to it is our best estimate of that price tag. If we guess wrong and we guess high, the money gets allocated, but then it goes back to the town. If we guess wrong and we guess low, then we have to come back and ask for more money, and that's pretty awkward. So there's a lot of pressure on us to guess high, and I think some of the previous documents were guess high, had some higher guesses than, than maybe I wanted to make. I don't know if this is reassuring or not, but I, I feel comfortable having done, had some experience with some of the renovations here in the district over the past month, and what those things costed out at, that we, we could shape... and what those things costed out at, that we, we could shave prices down where I did.
I think providing...
So it's based on, it's based, it's based on actual, you know, pricing experience in terms of the pricing. In terms of the what gets on, some of it is based on our experience of where, where things are already failing and some of it is based on projections of expected lifespan of, of the equipment. And those two things get mixed together and I can try to document that better, but just for your own sake, I wanted to try and clarify that.
Well, I appreciate that, yeah. I think, you know, just some further documentation would really go a long way in helping further explain this. Dr. Morris, I think we should move on.
Yeah, I think it's a really good idea and I think we can think about the, the reasonable size ticket items that are on here and just having, you know, a small paragraph of explanation for each one so that, you know, it kind of gets at what I think you're, what I understand you're saying, which is some justification of where did the costs come from and what's the need? So that it's, it's not just oral explanation, but actually there's, there's some paper trail that goes along with it.
And in fact, the process with the Joint Capital Planning Committee, I don't have the initials fast enough in my brain, involves more paperwork where there's more explanation going to go to them already.
Sure. Okay. Thank you very much. Moving us along, we're at school choice hearing. Dr. Morris, do you want to introduce them?
So each district in Massachusetts has to have a school choice hearing. It's an opportunity for the public to weigh in on whether we should, in this case, continue being a school choice district or not. To clarify, it means school choice students who are currently in the district are guaranteed in the district regardless of this vote. It's whether we would accept new school choice students for the next fiscal year. I'll give you my two cents on school choice, which is that for at the elementary level, it fills empty seats in classrooms. So if we have a, for instance, grade level where there's 49 students in this district, we wouldn't have class sizes of 24 and a half and we would have very small class sizes, which is advantageous. It's also very financially challenging and we want to be conscious of the funding that we do receive, generous funding from the Town of Amherst. So, you know, in that scenario, we have three classes, it fills them out to well, still well below the school committee guidelines. So the, it's, it's basically the cost that comes in from those student, the funds that come in from those students supplement the budget. It's, it's pretty cost-effective that way. And really what it does is keep our class sizes low. It prevents us from having decisions other districts have about, do you have a 24-person first grade class? And this community, you know, I wouldn't support that. I don't think the community would support that. And really what it does is also is it, it allows us to maintain full-time specialists in terms of where the funds go, how do we utilize them? So we were very fortunate to have full-time art, music, PE, library and media center and technology teachers in each of our three elementary schools that just frankly wouldn't be possible if we were in a school choice district. So it really supplements our ability to support the whole child and for that reason I would support continuing with school choice in the next fiscal year.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Dr. Morris about this topic? So this is a hearing. So we'll go back through the motions that we did before. If anyone is here and to speak to this topic and would like to approach the committee, feel free to do so. Here's a microphone, just introduce yourself, please. I suspect most folks are here for something else tonight, which is perfectly okay. Okay, seeing no one approaching the microphone, I will close the school choice hearing. Is there anything further from us, from the committee, that you need, Dr. Morris, on this at this time?
No, we'll plan to schedule a vote at the, probably not the next meeting because the next meeting's going to be...
One after?
Yeah, or maybe two after, I think.
Two meetings, two or three meetings after?
Yeah. Well, sometime in March.
Great.
Yes.
So in the meantime, again, if anyone has any, either here in the audience or who's watching online or afterwards, if you have any comments on this topic for the school committee, please feel free to email us, schoolcommittee@arps.org. We'll reach out, Dr. Morris, or any of us individually. Okay, moving on to sabbatical vote. In your packets, you'll have a write-up from an educator here who has been requesting a sabbatical leave, which is a policy here in the district and a pretty progressive one, I think, and a pretty great one, allows educators to come back with information, new ways of doing things from their experiences outside the school district. Dr. Morris, do you want to introduce this one, please?
Sure, actually, I want to, the first, start by introducing the author. Chris Egomire is in the audience, so thank you for coming. And so the gestalt is I want to, I would recommend that the school committee supports this sabbatical request for three reasons. The first is that when I'm looking at sabbatical requests, the first, my first order of business or analysis is, is it supporting the school or district improvement plan? And so while Wildwood's still getting, doing some heavy lifting on their school improvement plan and continuing that work with Dr. Kristen Rodriguez, this is very, this work is very consistent with the direction that the team that's working on that is looking to go in. So for me, it's very consistent with where Wildwood is and frankly where our district is, where we're looking for high, high engagement in our curriculum and innovative teaching methods that support our students to be active in their learning. The second is, the second frame I have is what's the, how high quality the experience will be? So even if it's aligned, if I don't, if my perception's not a high-quality experience that there'll be a lot of learning, then, you know, it's great that it might be consistent, but if it's not going to move, you know, the district forward, then probably not worth doing. High Tech High is kind of nationally, it is a nationally renowned set of schools in California. For the previous building project, the consultant who worked with us in the educational visioning was involved in that and I know that was very inspirational to many of the staff members who were part of that visioning process, to hear from his experiences of a, a school district and they have middle school, elementary school and high schools in their network, who are really thinking about schooling differently. You know, it's not just the technology, it's actually the experiential learning. You know, I still remember this video, I'm sure Mr. Egomire does too, about high school students and, and creating a project about saving the bay. This is in Northern California. And, you know, the work they did, because they were so passionate about the experience, they learned all that core content in the, in the effort of making promotional videos and informing and educating the larger community about the impact of the bay that they lived very close to. Also, the High Tech High has a network of schools, serves a very diverse population that I think, you know, has some consistencies with, with our, our school district. It's actually a higher poverty and higher percentage of English language learner population than our school district, but I think consistent with our district goals around the achievement gap. And the third is that what's the plan for distribution? In other words, if one person goes, has this experience, what's the impact on anything more than, you know, 20 some odd or 18 students the following school year? And actually, I want to compliment Mr. Egomire who reached out to me and, and we had a lot of engagement on that topic because that was actually my initial concern when I received the, the initial sabbatical request and I complimented Mr. Egomire for really adding in this kind of last page in a smidge, really about how this will happen because we know classroom teachers are incredibly busy, they're teaching for 80% of the day. So the question is, I think it'd be great for your students, for, for this teacher's students, but how's that going to inform a larger group than, you know, 20 students a year, which is still wonderful, but not really consistent with the language of sabbatical? And I want to compliment Mr. Egomire for working with Mr. Yafi and Ms. Estes to really create a robust plan for distribution and how could this work really inform not just those students, but the entire school population? How is it so consistent with the effort? So for those three reasons, I'm, I'm supporting and would encourage your acceptance of the sabbatical request. And I'm here and perhaps Mr. Egomire might be here if there's questions that are relevant for him as well.
Thank you. And this is a vote, actually, of the school committee on this, on this topic.
It is, yeah. I should have started with that. I apologize.
Any questions or comments for superintendent or maybe perhaps even Mr. Egomire? Mr. Nakajima?
No.
Sorry. Mr. Dunleavy?
So there's a lot of reference to Wildwood's current either exploration or decision to sort of gear the, the district, the school improvement plan towards a project-based model. I know we had talked about eventually Fort River and Wildwood coming back and talking to us about their, their school focus. It seems like, well, perhaps not complete, that the thematic direction of Wildwood, if, you know, if, if this is reflective of that, is, is pretty strong. Is there anything we could, we could hear about that at this point and, or, or maybe soon from, from Wildwood or? Yeah, so we were planning to have them come back, the schools, both Wildwood and Crocker Farm come back in April because their last session with Dr. Rodriguez is March 18th, I want to say, to share where they are. But I, I think perhaps as reflected in Mr. Egomire's documentary, I won't speak for you, so please come up and feel free to offer a divergent viewpoint, is this has really been consistent with Wildwood has been working on prior to even this current effort. So for instance, I know Mr. Yafi attended some professional development last week over the break around leading, you know, project, in project-based learning schools. It was a national conference that he attended. This has been an ongoing set of conversations that have occurred at Wildwood. Ron Berger, who some of you may know, is a leader of expedition learning who, who works in Amherst and lives in the area, has been there multiple times. So it's really consistent with the flow that's been heading in that direction and really the effort around strategic planning at the elementary level is codifying goals and strategies along that dimension.
Move to approve the sabbatical request as submitted.
Okay, this motion's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look forward to hearing back when you return. Okay, moving on to the next item, it's dual-language enrollment.
And I'll encourage Ms. Richardson to come up and she brought a partner slash guest, Maria Luisa, so I'll let her do the introductions. But I, I think my framing is just that when this was presented last month, there's a lot of feedback on making it more clear, more specific, and so I want to compliment, in my opinion, Ms. Richardson has, has taken that feedback to heart and done a significant amount of editing to make it both a public-facing document that people can understand, but also one that really lays out more specifically what is involved in the process. So really tonight is more just if there's additional feedback to share with Ms. Richardson after she introduces some of the changes briefly and her, her guest, who's been supporting us not just in this, but a, a large number of areas around dual-language programming, that we're happy to hear them and our meeting is March 6th. So that's for all families, but there's certainly going to be a dual-language component. So this is a really great opportunity if there's last feedback before we share this with the public on that date.
Great. Welcome, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. So this is Maria Luisa de Stefano and I want to let you introduce yourself. She, she carries a lot of hats, I think, and we're really excited to have her supporting this work.
Hi, I'm very happy to be here. My name is Maria Luisa de Stefano. I'm a faculty at University of Massachusetts. I'm, my area of expertise is bilingual education. I'm officially here as a faculty, so a teacher of teachers, but also researcher in bilingual education. At the same time, I have to acknowledge that I'm a mom of three years old, four years old, and maybe in the future could attend the school, so I'm so excited about this project. My daughter is trilingual in Italian, Spanish and English, so I would love to have her in this type of program. I'm also board member of MABE, the Multi-State Association for Bilingual Education, but the district has been seeing so good work with, in pair, in a, in a group team with the, with the MABE. And I think that I really, I applaud them and really doing a great job in planning this new program. And I'm also, you know, an English learner, bilingual learner myself, so I try to compare, you know, my experience as a former teacher and researcher with my personal experience as well. And I'm, I'm here to serve. I'm here to support the, the district in this new exciting project.
Great, thank you.
So we thought we'd have Maria Luisa here to introduce to you all and that she's also done a lot of thinking with us about some of the specifics around enrollment and how do we think about making a program that's really strong in terms of the language background and the balance and all of those pieces? And she's also working with us in terms of the UMass courses and some other areas. So I guess, I'm trying to remember, I should have brought the older documents to compare. There's a lot more here. But a couple of the key things that I think we did change through a lot of conversations. One was laying out four sort of enrollment groups so that you could see where the Fort River zoning impacted the groups and where the language background impacted the groups. We did, oh, let's see, what else? Just clarified a bunch of things, gave more examples, more numbers. We did, Dr. Morris and I discussed having a, because we're really aiming to serve our Spanish-speaking and bilingual families, that we would do our best to outreach this spring, but that if we didn't fill the number of seats, that we're hoping to, that we would hold some seats through August first in order to fill them and maintain more of a waitlist so that we could get that language balance that we're hoping for. Am I missing anything major?
I think the other thing that I remember in the conversation is being really clear on what tool is being used for the lottery and being explicit about that. So, you know, that was laid out to the point of including the actual web link of the tool that we'd planned to use, not only would it be public, but if people knew what tool we're using. I think that was the thing, I'm thinking of the feedback from last time, I know that was, we got, received some specific feedback around that as well.
Yeah. I, I just want to say, just to jump in here, I think, you know, I really appreciate the way you laid out the, the four groups and the order upon which they would be, I'm assuming this is in sequential order, that's what the chart in the top says, the order in which they would be invited to participate. And just to read it out loud for the public and I think for anyone who's watching who may not have access to this document, so group one is Fort River-zoned Spanish speakers and bilingual students. Group two is Spanish speakers, bilingual students zoned to attend Crocker Farm or Wildwood. Group three is Fort River-zoned English speakers. And then group four is English speakers zoned to attend Crocker Farm or Wildwood, which again, makes a lot of sense, I think, given the feedback that the committee provided last, at the last meeting. I really appreciate that. And then also just to put a fine point on it, that this document states that on April 29th, a lottery for groups one and two, which is the Spanish speakers across the district, will be held. And then after that point, then the groups three and four would come in, right, into, into the lottery. So at this point, I'm going to open it up to the committee if there are any questions or comments for Ms. Richardson or Dr. Morris, Mr. Nakajima?
I was just going to say, I really appreciate the thoroughness with which we are providing, examples, definitions, you know, breaking down the categories. I mean, I think that was a lot of my feedback last time. And I just, I think it does, I think it really does answer, I think, a lot of what people are going to have is questions when they're saying, I don't get how this works, how do I figure this out? Without just coming to a session or making a phone call, this is now a resource that's going to let people have that really solid starting point. So thank you very much.
Ms. Richardson, I see your hand up.
Just kind of nitpicky thing here. I appreciate, again, all of the feedback, but I'm just thinking with group three and four, we're saying Fort River-zoned English speakers. Now, what if I'm bilingual Chinese, English?
That's a great point.
I think we should make sure it's conclusive unless they might think they're automatically in group one.
Yeah, no, great point.
And otherwise, I think the only other kind of general feedback I have is a question that I'm still having a little bit and isn't really on here is that since we've shown that these, there's like a continuum of English and Spanish speaking, I don't know if we, and we may not want to answer this formally and leave room for us to determine that as we see who applies and who's interested in it, but I think there is going to be some questioning about what makes me a Spanish speaker or a bilingual student to cut, what's the cutoff for these four groups? It seems like there was a decision not, forgive me if I've missed it.
No, no, you're...
But it seems like there might have been a decision not to include it and I'm assuming that's to give us the room to make that decision as we see who, who's interested. Is that right?
Exactly. Yeah, so we do, I mean, we did mention specifically that the group for one and two would include Spanish speakers and bilingual families, but we do really need to see what the enrollment, you know, what the pool is and make those decisions based on what will be the best makeup of the class and the program.
We had a lot of discussion on that very point, so I'm glad you pointed it out in this public meeting because we spent probably more time in that, Ms. Richardson and I, at least in our conversations, I don't know about yours or others, spent more time on that very question than any, anything else in the document that's either listed or not listed. But at the end, you know, we really want to think about having a range, not just a 50-50, which we talked about the last time, but, you know, with, you know, Maria Luisa and other researchers, that we also want to make sure that, you know, out of the students who are identifying as Spanish speaker or some, you know, some Spanish background, that we also have some fluent Spanish speakers and then a range within that because it's not a, it's not a binary system, I'm either bilingual or not. And we want to make sure that, that continuum is represented equally across that grouping. And so that's where it gets a little cumbersome to lay that out specifically until you know who the pool of students are.
Mr. Dunleavy?
That's a question on the sibling priority enrollment rule. So one potential issue I can imagine being asked is, so say your first child gets in in group two. in Group 2, and then you have a younger child coming in. If the Spanish speakers from Fort River fill up that year, then your older child, I'm sorry, your younger child will not get into the program. And so, the same thing with, if your first, if your first child gets into Group 4, and then the English speakers fill up at Fort River, then you're not, your other child isn't getting in. It seems like, I'm trying to think of it just from the, I'm thinking out loud here, because it's a complicated question of, I think, if I was a parent and I was really excited about this program, I would have a real hard time making that commitment, and we want people to stay in the program, right? Knowing that there was a, some X percent of chance, and if the program's really successful, then, you know, kids forever are going to want to do it, that, you know, a chance, maybe even a probability, that I'm going to have a two-zone family, which might not be tenable. And so, I don't know how you've maybe sort of thought of that. I mean, I'm just thinking about this through this.
Dr. Morris.
Yeah, so I think for Zone 2, just based on the size of the catchment area, I'm not so concerned about that, because it'd be, it'd be, unless, and if demographics change, we'll have to revisit it, but it'd be unusual to have 20 Fort River-zoned Spanish speaker bilingual students. So, if you're at the top of Zone 2, you're going to get into the program, just mathematically. It's just, it's hard to imagine with our current demographics that that would be an issue. For Zone 4, we had a lot of conversations about that. I think that is a more realistic scenario where it could create a two-school option. And for us at the current moment, we want to prioritize having the greatest number of Spanish-speaking students in the program. And it was hard to prioritize a English-speaking student who doesn't live in the Fort River catchment area over a Fort River, an English-speaking student who doesn't live in the Fort River catchment area over an English-speaking student who does live in that, who lives across the street. So, that was really the conversation. Zone 2, I don't think's an issue, but I think that was where we struggled, you know, to about Zones 3 and 4 and how to prioritize that. I'm not saying that as clearly as I'd like. I don't know if Ms. Richardson.
No, I think, did that make sense?
Yeah, okay.
It makes sense to me, but I'm thinking about it a lot. So, the other piece that I would say is that we're, on the front end, we're going to have that issue with families splitting schools as well. So, that's something we have to think about regardless, I think, you know, in talking to some families who have kids at Crocker Farm or at Wildwood already, we're saying to them, "Hey, we think this is a great opportunity. Would you be interested in having your, you know, your kids come to the Fort River Dual-Language Program?" That's a challenge we have to think about for them. Some families I've talked to have said, "As long as you're going to get the kids there, you're going to provide the transportation. That's fine. I'm excited about the program." Right? Others won't feel that way. They'll feel like it is too much of a split. So, but just thinking about how do we support families who are in that situation, I think, is going to happen as we start to recruit in general.
You know, one thing that I think might be helpful, just, I was looking at the enrollment team paragraph here, which describes the role of this group, which would be convened to review applications and make enrollment determinations. Perhaps it's helpful to include here, or whatever document ends up becoming the public-facing document, if it's not this, that there will be periodic review, right, maybe an annual review of how this is working out for families.
It's there, right?
I didn't see that, well, I mean, I think at least where people's eyes will be trained to go looking for information specifically around enrollment.
Yeah.
I think we talked about it, but I don't.
It's right here. So, it's under the feedback section. It says all families will, who participate in the lottery will be surveyed about their experience, based on this feedback, as well as feedback.
Well, that's not exactly what I'm saying. So, I think that, yeah, I think that.
So, adding there, maybe?
Saying, well, perhaps. I mean, I would actually, I would strongly consider adding it into the place again where people would.
Oh, in the enrollment team section.
In the enrollment team section, you know. And possibly even sooner, I think, where will siblings have, you might even repeat it a couple of different times, and only because, again, whatever becomes a public-facing document, that's what people will be referencing when they're looking for information to help decide whether or not they want to participate in the program, you know. So, to see something along the lines of having the school committee and the superintendent and the enrollment team, whatever formula it is, review this on an annual basis to, you know, understand whether or not this is working, perhaps may not necessarily address exactly what Mr. Demling is raising, which is a problem, but at least, you know, can help people understand, well, maybe they'll think differently about this, or there's a place for us to go if we're really concerned about this and we want to advocate on behalf of our family or something.
Yeah.
Dr. Morris?
I think the other thing I wish I'd said at the beginning when Mr. Demling had first asked that question is, some of the sibling piece comes from a direct experience of districts. So, when we were in Harrisonburg, for instance, they were like, "Be wary of sibling policies." Because really, it eliminates the option for many families, because you have enough siblings, just the families that'll be in, there's enough siblings where actually you just get a small number of families who are populating the program, and it doesn't actually have the reach that you'd want to have. And also, they felt like in many communities, a lot of other communities have faced this, it actually starts deteriorating the balance you want between Spanish-speaking students and English-speaking students. Lannick had a big article about this last year about, oh, I'm going to forget the title of it, but it was essentially that dual-language programs are a commodity and they're being hoarded by certain demographics that sometimes shift the intent of the program. So, I think we're, some of this is based literally on Feedback and MABE, I know, has also shared some cautions with us about that. And for me, the viewpoint of, for English-speaking students is that to be in this program is a huge benefit, and we want to expand it as, you know, share that benefit as readily as we can, but I think keeping it more open has some benefits as well. So, that's our perspective.
Mr. Demling.
Yeah, so I think it's the last comment I would make on the issue really briefly is that, so it's actually something that we don't, is not going to be in play this year, because we don't have anybody in the dual-language program right now. So, we actually do have a year to actively have this conversation, and I would encourage us to, because, I mean, there's a particular issue we're talking about with regards to English speakers in Fort River versus English speakers outside of Fort River, and who gets prioritized within that group, that doesn't affect the balance issue that you just talked about.
Right.
And we say, you know, Fort River kids across the street, I mean, most Fort River kids, kids who go to Fort River don't live across the street. Our enrollment zones are all over the place. So, I just think it's an act of discussion, but now that we've identified it as one of the more complex issues, that thankfully, we don't have to have solidified in a couple of weeks. We can continue to have the active discussion.
Let's bring it back.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, great. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Richardson or Dr. Morris on this topic? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I don't know also if it's worth mentioning, just you've asked for some info on outreach events, and I can say that we have a bunch coming up in March. So, there is the kindergarten event that's district-wide, but we also have some specific events happening in different areas of the district that are reaching out to different communities.
I wonder if you could share that with the school committee, perhaps with Ms. Westmoreland, and that way, we can help promote it as well.
Sure.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is math report, grade 6. And we had a little bit of a preview of this at the regional school committee last night.
Just a smidge.
Just a little tiny bit.
So, and I'll keep this brief. I mean, I think this is a conversation, clearly, we're going to have to come back to the larger conversation about mathematics. The reason that I asked the chair to have this added is, you know, that conversation was very region-centric, and it really wasn't around the recommendation that was made by math consultants about where the 6th graders are educated. I mean, I think that will come back to naturally, probably in April, once another facility study is done, you know, and I'm not foreshadowing what we should do about that, but I think there's a natural place for that conversation. It's more just to say that we noted that there was a recommendation to change the math curriculum in 6th grade that was made, and really to align our programming 6 through 12. And it says, sort of with our current structure, governance structure, it's a bit of an awkward conversation, because 6th grades are located, at least in districts I govern, across four schools and two districts that are, you know, not necessarily formally connected to the 7 through 12 model. But the way that we viewed this, the way the consultants did the work, we asked them not to come back twice, you know, there wasn't a reasonable expectation, is that, you know, the work that would be continuing would be 6 through 12, so that our 6th grade teachers would be actively engaged in that work. There were some conversations specifically about perhaps having fewer 6th grade teachers teach mathematics, so there could be a little more specialization with 6th grade teachers with more background in mathematics instruction, and we're actively looking about models. It'd be a little easier if we, classes, having three classes in the 6th grade makes that, or two, actually makes that quite complicated of how to pull that off. But we are actively having those conversations, you know. For me, I'd like to bring this back. I just wanted, I didn't want to have this big report that referenced 6th grade one night and the next night, not have any. And I'm open to any questions about it, but it was more just wanting to say at an Amherst School Committee meeting that there was a recommendation made by math consultants that, to look at our 6th grade curriculum and scope and sequence, and to further align with the regional schools.
I feel like this is a really, really big topic.
It is, yeah, absolutely. And I'm looking at how much time is, look, you know, given for it, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate the superintendent bringing this to the committee's attention, I think, more formally and putting it on the agenda. I do think that this is probably something that we want to bring back in a more substantive way, with perhaps, you know, even some initial thoughts back from you, you know, and also from the principals and other educators.
Absolutely.
You know, I would definitely entertain any initial thoughts or reactions or directions along those lines from the committee, you know, but I don't think it makes a lot of sense for us to dive deep into this conversation right now. But I do think, you know, maybe thinking about our agendas in the next couple of months, how we might be able to bring this piece in more substantively would make a lot of sense.
So, I agree, and I think the other thing, the reason, other reason I wanted to have it on here tonight is that I referenced this report in the budget. So, just to be really clear of like, why are you just doing this like 90-second, you know, conversation? You know, there were some budget implications, both, you know, in the curriculum material side, but also on the staffing side, that I felt would be really awkward if I didn't say what I said. And I'm open to any questions. I agree with the chair's perspective that we want to do a more deep dive when Mr. Sheen's back, and we can do that, but it just, it felt weird not to at least have this as a placeholder.
Mr. Nakajima?
No, I was just going to say, I would like urge us not to go too deep on this, just because you're like opening pinter's doors in terms of all the implications that run from how your staffing, math instruction, inner elementary schools, and what the curriculum is, on to moving 6th grade to the middle school, right? I mean, it runs the gamut, and this could open up an awful lot. I would much rather have you bring back a structured conversation on this topic.
Yeah.
That's organized where you've also had an opportunity to have outreach to all staff so that there's input, and this feels really well-integrated and organic, and not something where we're just winging out there with, whether they're wonderful ideas or not, ideas that could feel really disruptive to a lot of people.
Agreed.
Mr. Demling?
I think just from, like, staying on the theme of metastructure, agenda kind of things, I think, I think the usefulness of having a joint meeting with the region is going to be helpful in this regard, because it, from the region meeting, it sounded like some of these suggestions could happen fairly quickly, and if that happens, there was an emphasis on aligning 6 to 8. And we only go up to 6 on this committee. And so, if we're talking about aligning 6 to 8, then we have to be talking with the region at the same time. So, I think that the urgency of that ratchets up a few notches, and then the need to just make sure that we've discussed it thoroughly enough to hit whatever implementation schedule is going to be necessary. And just in general, the notion of recommending moving 6 to the middle school sort of came out of left field in that. So, that, again, is something we've only ever heard from the building project standpoint, but that sort of ratchets up that conversation a little bit as well, so.
Yeah, I would agree that, I think it ratchets up in terms of just attention, right? I still would urge, I guess, this committee and the superintendent to make sure that when we bite into the apple, that we actually are biting into something that is fully thought through and, or at least, you know, vetted internally in the district among all the folks who really matter, and to really start thinking through what some of those implications would be, and then bring that back to the committee. And maybe it's a joint meeting with the region, you know, we can certainly talk with our chair to figure that out. But it seems like at that point, then, we have something substantive to really discuss, you know, and make happen. Ms. McDonald?
I would second the request for a joint meeting, because I, sort of building on your observation, Dr. Morris, earlier about the, we have all these meetings because we have two separate structures, and this is one topic, and we shouldn't have separate conversations about it, particularly if, you know, we're going to be hampered in not talking about 6th grade when the recommendation clearly does include 6th grade. So, I would strongly advocate for having a joint meeting to, when Mr. Sheen comes back with this.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is MSBA Statement of Interest Process, which has been taking over quite a bit of time, the community and this committee, for some time now, for a few weeks. Just very quickly, before we jump in, I just want to say, we are, we've already scheduled the listening sessions for folks who may just be tuning in. We have two sessions scheduled tomorrow, the 27th. We have two more scheduled on Thursday, the 28th. And then, we have two more scheduled on March 6th next week, with a possible snow date of March 7th. And so, hopefully, we will get good attendance there. I think the town council has been doing a really good job of, you know, helping to turn some constituents out. We've heard from, or I've heard anyway, from the town council president, that all town council members will be attending at least a couple of the sessions, many of them, which is great. I know this committee also will be in attendance. We have purposefully not posted these meetings as actual official school committee meetings or town council meetings, because we are there mostly to listen. So, we will be there in listening form. We have a facilitator who will be, you know, managing the conversations. He will introduce all of us. He will introduce town council as well, but there will be no formal speaking role for us. And so, I think that that's actually a good thing. We will probably all be, depending on how many of us are at each of these sessions, be sort of splintered off and into the different group discussions, so we can actually dive in and hear what people are saying and participate in those conversations, you know, sort of So, you know, I'm looking forward to it. I think, hopefully, the weather's not too bad tomorrow. We're looking at a few inches of snow.
We are on for tomorrow night, if there's any questions.
We are on for tomorrow night, yes.
Mr. Sullivan, who was here earlier, assured me that we would be fine. It's light fluffy snow that's coming. If the Schutzeberry DPW person says we're fine, then I think we're fine.
Excellent. That's good to hear, yes. But I've been saying to people is, there are no hazardous conditions so far, so hopefully that's true. Mr. Nakajima?
I'm just going to, I know this is obvious, but I was just going to emphasize that not only do we not have a formal role, but I know we all know this, but we legally cannot offer our opinions, like, we are legally prescribed from doing so, under pain of the Attorney General telling us we've done a bad thing. So, I know we have no formal role, but we have no informal role either.
We have no informal role, formal role.
If you know what I mean.
No role, period.
Like, no matter what somebody says and how much you want to stand up and say something, don't do it. It's against the law.
Yep.
So, just building on that, because when you say participate, it's participate by active listening.
By active listening, that's right. Although, we did, we did say before that if there's a direct question made to, you know, to one of us, that we can answer, and that's okay, but we should not deliberate, we should not expand on it, we should not share our opinions. It is literally just a, you know, factual response to a question that's composed to us. And if it feels like something that is too big, we can say to that person, please bring it to a school committee meeting, we will have a discussion around this, and we will be capturing all of those questions. So, the facilitators actually have a group of people that will be there writing down all of the questions that we hear, and so, those will be reported back to us for us to respond to however we want to in public meetings. Dr. Morris, is there anything else that you want to add at this time?
I just said one, so I know we've talked about this before, but there's at least one district, I don't know of others, that have been advertising the Crocker Farm in particular event as a district meeting at the same start time as the listening session.
So, and I've just seen sort of exchanges about, well, I'll be there late, and so, I think we need to be prepared that people are going to be walking in expecting that it's a district meeting at some point, and because it's not being labeled as a listening session for the schools. listening session for the schools.
Well, that's unfortunate. I think, I had a very clear conversation with the town council president, who did share that with district counselors, that these are not district council meetings, that they were welcome to have a district council meeting at the same, on the same day, either before or after, but these are school committee meetings for the purp, or, you know, for the purpose of these listening sessions. One thing we can definitely do is make sure the facilitator reminds people of that, so even though unfortunately, these may have been advertised, you know, differently, we can certainly have a facilitator remind people that this is not, these are not district meetings, so no other topics will be discussed, and also the district counselors don't have a role there at all. Great. Okay.
Yeah.
So, I think that was, that was pretty much it. We just wanted to bring everyone up to speed, and if there's any questions or comments, Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I think the only thing I'll note, and I think I've mentioned this before, but I'm able to attend about half of the sessions. There's other work commitments, like visiting Leverton on, you know, Thursday night and things like that. But, but again, to Mr., to the chair's point, you know, you know, while I'm not bound in the same way that, you know, elected officials are bound in terms of open meeting law, I still see my role as pretty identical to what Mr. Donas shared, that I can, if there's a factual question, if it's a clear factual question, I'll give a clear factual answer. If it's an opinion question, that's really not the purpose, it's really to listen.
Yeah, and we don't want really, you know, I think that, I've talked a lot with the facilitator, you know, his recommendation and the experience that he has in, in meeting these kinds of conversations, is that we don't want to get caught up in a discussion around, you know, a question being posed, and then people getting drawn into what they believe or what they don't believe or any of that. And he's actually, I think, very confident that he can manage that kind of conversation. So I'm just thinking specifically about you.
Yeah.
Coming into the, those sessions, that there may be an expectation from some that are in attendance, that you should be answering all the questions that are being posed, and that's really not what these sessions are about. So he and his, you know, work partner will be very clear about how, you know, that these sessions are really just to capture those comments and questions, and that, again, you may answer some very simple factual questions, but that we're not going to get pulled into a long, drawn-out presentation. Great.
Great.
Okay, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the regionalization update. So, Mr. Dumling, I'm gonna look to you.
Yes.
You've been very busy as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
So, regionalization, for all those who are watching for the first time and entering this topic, I'll give my standard 20-second introduction, which is, we are a pre-K to sixth district in Amherst, that's a pre-K to sixth district in Pelham, and the basic question is, should we merge these two districts into one? Is that educationally and financially advisable for both towns? That's what our board is exploring. I think that's the shortest I've ever done that, so that's, that's what we're doing. So, update on that. So our public outreach continues as we're working our way through the detailed issues and such, so I'm, I'm actually giving a talk tomorrow at noon at the bank center. The Legal Women Voters has invited us too, so that's, thank you very much, the excellent Legal Women Voters. Stan has invited us to appear on his Byline episode, so Emily Marriott, who's the vice chair, and Representative from Pelham, and myself, will be recording that next week, and that will be out sometime at the end of, the end of the month, so. You looked like you had a good time on that the other, the other week, so.
You know, Mr. Rosenberg is, is an absolute delight, and a really great interviewer, and so I, I'm really glad this show exists now, that Amherst Media put this together, and that we have this resource in our community.
Mm-hmm. So, so that's one. Two is, we got a fairly substantive update from our financial consultant last week, and we are continuing to review, so this Friday morning is our next meeting, we're reviewing the results there. So I can give you a brief update on that, but before I do, the, the, before, I didn't want to forget, we're trying to schedule a two-towns meeting, so essentially getting the select board, finance committee and school committee from Pelham, and the town council, school committee, and, yes, those two, from Amherst, together Saturday morning, in the tradition, in the logistical tradition of the four towns meeting, so that we basically present our work to date so far. So more than an intro, saying, okay, this is where we've got so far for pros and cons on school committee composition, on the financial modeling, this is, you know, the sort of completed exploration of that, because there's a wealth of experience and knowledge of people who are serving on these boards, and we want to make sure that before we present to the public and then make a recommendation, that we leave no stone unturned. That's obviously a huge logistical scheduling challenge, that I reached out to the chairs, including Mr. Donas, about that. I just want to get a sense from this committee about sort of timing, so we were looking at, I had proposed anywhere from mid-March to mid-April, and the initial feedback I got from chairs was that closer to mid-April would be much preferable. I'm seeing nodding heads, is that? Okay, so we're, we're talking about the scheduling this Friday, so we'll try and shore that up, but that was, that was my sense from other chairs, and it looks like, given everything else that's going on, that would be good.
Thank you.
So, so the thumbnail sketch on the finance, financial analysis, so without giving you the whole blow-by-blow of all the details and spreadsheets, just to bring you up to speed on that, I'd, I'd given a brief update before, where our financial consultant had basically modeled an assessment method of what would the savings be in the first fiscal year for Amherst, and what would they be for Pelham, and using the sort of standard-issue vanilla model that most districts use, which is essentially a five-year enrollment, with or without some adjustment for transportation, it didn't show any savings for Amherst, and it showed all the savings for, for Pelham, and so our basic question is, is there an assessment method that's, that will produce savings for both towns, that's also explainable and reliable going forward? And so, the second iteration of that, our consultant went back and looked at lots of different, over 100 different combinations of weighted variables, of, of how you could potentially get to savings, and we did get to one that had a weighted percentage of median income and five-year enrollment. The board felt that that was, it was so complicated to derive that, that it wasn't justifiably explainable in any sense. You know, the only real common sense explanation we could get to, if someone asked us, is, well, we, we did that so that we get to our savings, there was no real, you know, originating, you know, justification for that. And so, we, we went through a third exercise that was presented, presented last Wednesday, we'll be discussing on, on Thursday, which is to start with your enrollment, and then he used a factor called enrollment shares, and this is after starting, so the first year is assessment by agreement, which is essentially, we just agree that we split the savings, so that's how you establish your first-year budget, and then whatever increases come on the next-year budget, you then use the assessment formula for that. So you sort of initiate the, the assessment, and then go for, go forward. Using that method, just with enrollment shares, it's simpler, and it does produce the savings for both towns in the first year. It seemed quite sensitive to small changes in the next year, so we looked at FY '21, if, making some assumptions, right, about the increase in the budget, and how many students from Pelham, and how many students from Amherst change, and it, it varied the, the savings quite significantly. And the combined savings here is, is not a tremendous amount, so the, between, if you add up in the first year, the transportation savings, that 70% reimbursement, which is a projection, and the bonus aid, it's 428,000, and if you take the bonus aid away, it's about 375,000. So there's, there's not a tremendous amount of wiggle room for that to be split and allocated, and to change over time, and still produce savings, right? So that's, so we're talking about that on Friday, seeing what, what we want to do for that. That, this was, this has been really sort of the key example that we've really dug into and said, we want to make sure that we exhaust every avenue here, and that we present to, and get feedback from finance and select and school boards about their thoughts on the matter, people who have spent years thinking about these kinds of problems. So I hope that's relatively clear. Any, any questions on, on where we're at with that?
Ms. Pitzer?
Just a clarifying question. When you're talking about savings, I'm assuming it's about the operating budget and not, you didn't look at all at potential capital costs or savings, I mean.
Right, so the, when we talk about the assessment method, we're talking about operational savings.
Yeah, but so, so the, I guess I was trying to understand, so this conversation about savings is really just to get to a proper assessment method, it's not to kind of create a cost-benefit analysis in terms of whether or not we should adopt regionalization, it's more about just figuring out what type of assessment method you'd use more we to get to.
So this particular subtopic is just about the assessment method, this modeling that we're going through with our financial consultant. More broadly, though, we're definitely looking at, is it cost-benefit analysis? And one of the factors in that, I think I mentioned before, the MSBA gives you an extra 6% reimbursement on new building projects if you're forming a new region, so that's one consideration, one factor in potential savings. We also, we, we talked to superintendent and the finance director about, is there any cost savings from having one district, given, given that we're already so joined with Union 26, that we already share services? You know, we essentially concluded that, no, there's no real cost savings from, from sharing the services without Union 26, just in one district. But, so, yeah, just the short answer to your question is, yes, we are looking at the broader question, is it, you know, what's the broad cost-benefit analysis?
And I assume that the two towns meeting, this will be covered, right? Sort of in some sort of presentation?
Yes, yeah, so, so my, you know, my intention is to, is to not do just a 101-level intro, because I think most people on these boards have that already, and yet we don't want to say, okay, we're done, we've decided, you know, here's our conclusion. We want to say, well, we've, we've explored these branches, because there's really only a half a dozen or so major issues, but these are very long branches, and say, okay, we've explored them, here's the pros-cons, and what we've, we've come to, what do you think? What's your feedback? What's, what are, are there things that we're not looking at? Are we crazy to be continuing to explore this particular branch? You know, before we go to the public and then present this quite complicated topic, you know, what's, what's your sense and take? Because we were gonna have to do that anyway, it's just, it's just gonna be easier to get everybody in the same room, as opposed to doing six meetings over the course of two weeks.
I think it's a good idea, I mean, I think, you know, I would recommend having, you know, a brief presentation that definitely doesn't make too many assumptions, but is not too weedy either, you know, so it's, it's really just about the highlights of the questions that you've been trying to answer. I would also encourage there to be, you know, split time between the Pelham representatives and the, you know, Amherst representatives on this committee. Just politically, I think it's a smart move, if you're gonna be presenting to the two towns, to have, you know, folks from both sides, or both towns represented, and to have those voices there pretty clearly. But I, I do recommend also that, you know, before the two towns, that there be materials shared with the committees, so that we have some time to peruse some of that, you know, and bring the best kind of feedback we can bring to the meeting.
Right.
Mr. Nakajima?
Yeah, I guess the only thing on that is, if there are any, I don't, I don't know how you've been organizing the work, if there are any assumptions that you've made going into it that are sort of ground rules for your conversation, and I'm just gonna throw some out, like, a ground rule is Pelham Elementary School is a functioning elementary school, will exist in perpetuity after the regionalization occurs, and there's been no, ala what Ms. Pitzer said, if you're scenario, scenario planning around facilities and operating, you, you either are, or you're not, modeling, like, eliminating Pelham Elam is one of your, one of your objectives, and creating operational costs or anything, so, I mean, I'm making that up, because you could say eliminate Fort River, I'm gonna put an addition on, but I'm just saying, either you're going radical, another, the real point of getting at, is either you're going like, you know, every concept's open, sort of a radical evaluation of how do you get cost savings, or in fact, you've made, which some could be very reasonable, ground rules at the beginning, saying, look, we're only entertaining this, I mean, Pelham said, and I'm not trying to pick on them, Pelham said at the beginning, as a ground rule, we're only entertaining this conversation if we assume that, for the most part, Pelham Elam stays intact as a functioning thing. Now, you either made that assumption, or you didn't make that assumption, I just think you should be transparent about any of those things, so that, A, we know them going in, and B, we, I don't know, don't end up arguing about it unless we have to.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That was a great update. Okay, next item on the agenda is Fort River feasibility update. Mr. Nakajima?
Yeah, so, yeah, that and if you have anything to throw.
Yeah, I'll, we'll link it at the end.
So the, the, the work continues to get to a final feasibility study document. There was a, a public session that was on February 13th at the middle school, that was, you know, moderately attended and had a bunch of questions. There's a presentation from the, from the design team, and a lot of, I think the bulk of the questions that came up were around how you make assumptions, and how you model a zero-energy building, and then how do you understand site conditions, and how do you explain site conditions, and how do they affect feasibility of buildings? I think those are the basic, not exclusive, but the basic categories of issues that came up. There's going to be another, that was in the evening, there's gonna be another daytime session on March 4th at.
Noon.
Noon, in Town Hall. In Town Hall, in which there's gonna be an identical presentation, and just taking notes from people, whoever shows up. As, as to the best of my knowledge, those are the only public sessions we're gonna have to get feedback on, should be included in the draft. There is also going to be put to bid a independent cost estimator to evaluate the cost estimates from the first cost estimator. Since the first cost estimator was a sub to the designer, there's language in the warrant article that was approved by town meeting, that suggested that there would be an independent cost estimator for it. That should improve at least the quality of the estimates that come out of it, the final study.
Are we concerned about the quality that has been done so far?
No. I mean, I'm not, I mean, sorry, I'm giving you my answer. I think the committee is, the committee, the committee would look forward to getting another set of eyes on it. Honestly, most of the, most of the variab, potential variability in cost estimates isn't gonna come from whether or not the cost estimator did a good job or not, it's what the inputs go in. So I'll give you an example of two examples. Based on the geotechnical analysis that was done, the, the designer originally assumed they might have to put pilings down into the ground for a foundation on the site because of its general wetness. Think, and this is really stupid, but if you know Boston, think back then, right? It's all on pilings. And, and they, and now they don't think they need it. So for the, if there, if you did a new construction of a two-story addition, you'd have to do some site mitigation around the wetness, but you wouldn't need to do the pilings. So since that was an assumption going into the original cost estimate, that meant the new building, new construction estimate was higher than it otherwise would be, because it had included that. On the other side of it, the, the designers did not include any mitigation to the floor or structure of the existing buildings, and the renovation, partial demo-reno concepts that they had. And coming out of the geotechnical survey, they've now said that they think, you might know what this is, I'm gonna butcher it, but there's something, apparently, you drill holes and you inject some sort of substance into the, into the ground, that then solidifies and stabilizes it, and they now need to do that. So that wasn't included in the cost estimate either. And so, it's not like it's a bad estimate, it's more a matter of, some of those things need to be revised. Obviously, if there's other things that come back that are different, they'll come back. There's, the goal is still to get this report done by the end of April. In that regard, one of the questions that the committee had, feasibility committee had, was whether the school committee here, the obligation of the, of the feasibility for feasibility, is to come back with the final report, and like, a presentation from the designers. The question is, do you want a preview of the draft before it becomes final, or you have an opportunity to give feedback, or do you want it at the end when the thing's done? And I mean, in, in an actual committee meeting, because obviously you're all free to attend, and if the chair said you wanted to read a draft, I would make sure you had a draft, or any other member.
I mean, I, I could tell you, I think for my preference, I would rather have a final, because I think that once we have any early drafts, that's what becomes public information and public knowledge, like, it's shared out. I'd rather have, you know, as, as close to perfect as we can be the public document that everyone starts working from. But I don't know if the committee has different thoughts or opinions on that. No?
Okay.
Okay.
I will take that silence as strong guidance, strong and.
Strong.
Assertive guidance from the school committee.
I think, so, I, my, my only question, though, about having the second round of cost estimators, is that adding cost to the feasibility study that was originally?
No, it was in the budget.
It was in the budget, okay.
Yeah, it was in the budget.
Okay, great. Dr. Morris?
Yeah, my only addition to what was shared by Dr., by Mr. Nakajima, was that this, early this afternoon, I did a window into ARPS with Richard, who is, who was here, who was the lead designer, and Jonathan Salvin, who's the chair of the feasibility committee. I thought it worked, I thought it was an excellent, and, I didn't have a large role in it, but I just thought it really clarified, for people who are wondering, what's the connection to a net future MSBA project, what's the value in doing this work? I really think both, both Jonathan and Richard clarified in, in really close detail what the work was that happened, and how it could then influence future work in the district. And, you know, I was mostly in the role of interviewer, but because I had the dual role, I, I jumped in and shared some of my thoughts as well, so that'll be available next week.
I'm not embarrassed, too embarrassed to say, is there anything I just said that was wrong based on what we're today?
No, no, not at all.
I'm okay with that if I was, I would want you to correct me.
I think the only thing that I heard from Richard, which will, you know, be on TV next week, is that he, he believes they'll be able to finish the report by the end of next month.
Great.
So by the end of March, or the end of April.
Oh, cool.
And, but, but other than that, it was spot on, but I, I, I think it really, for some of the questions that I know you've been getting as committee members, and I've been getting as superintendent, I really think it's a good 28 minutes for viewing, and, you know, Richard shared some of the images that you've all seen, but I think also provides a context of how this would be useful, no matter what process moves on, you know, from here, you know, because he's aware of the statement of interest process, he's aware of the listening sessions, and aware of what I've proposed, I have engaged him, but he's just, you know, aware. And, you know, he was able to speak to, you know, what are the implications of, and how could this data be used in the future, you know, whatever route we go, so I, I thought it was really helpful.
Great, thank you.
Can you send us a link when that's live? I think it's unavailable, because I think, yeah, I'd like to, I guess I'll watch it and make sure I agree with you. But if you agree it's helpful, I would actually love to push it out for people to see then. That'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. That was the goal that, that the three of us had, um, when designing, you know, because we collaboratively write questions, is, is really to show the value in it. And I, again, I'm self-interested in this, but I really think it, it came through that Richard and Jonathan were really clear with their responses and
Great.
I will absolutely share with you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Morris, and thank you, Mr. Nakajima, for the update. That was really good. Um, okay, so, uh, we have accept gifts, we have one gift, it looks like.
We do.
In the back of our packets. So I will take a motion if anyone wants to read the gift and, Ms. McDonald?
I move that we accept the gift from the Fort River Parent Council number 2015 to support the Fort River for Art program in the amount of $100.
Great, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor? Great, thank you very much. Thank you to the Fort River Parent Council. Uh, school committee planning.
So we've been meeting Monday, March 4th, uh, which is, uh, six days from now, um, primarily to talk about the statement of interest and review the, uh, feedback, uh, listening sessions, excuse me.
First round, anyway.
First round, yeah, because four of the six will be completed, thank you. Uh, we also have just one minor topic. We talked about a grant we got from DESI in collaboration with the Holyoke Public Schools around dual-language programming. And because it's a collaboration, our attorneys feel like it'd be a good thing for there to be a formal vote at the school committee to accept it, because it's, it's the grant that we're, it's coming directly to us, but we're actually owning it for both districts and that was the advice, so we'll bring it next week. And then we have to work on a date, whether it's March 11th or whether it's a topic that perhaps precedes a regional meeting. I'm saying this out loud, I have not talked to the regional chair, because he's in a role as an Amherst school committee member right now, right?
I'm not here.
Um, about, uh, a formal vote on, um, a statement of interest, um, to move a statement of interest forward. So those are the two kind of very specific meetings. Our next more traditional meeting is March 19th. I have, um, final budget vote, school choice vote, and actually I did have Quirka Farm Wildwood Street Planning, because that actually is after
Mm-hmm.
the last session with Dr. Riggs. I misspoke earlier when I said it was in April. Those are the three primary topics I had.
And, uh, the ADA audit, do we want to talk about that? Um, is that coming back next month?
Yeah, I'm thinking the last session, I'm gonna put it on as a placeholder. I gotta work with, with, um,
Okay.
with the consultants about their timeline. I think it's possible to do that on the 19th, but it depends how, what the feedback they get and how quickly they can, I can do a process update regardless.
You can talk about that later.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea, though.
And then we were also gonna talk about just, uh, some, uh, basic parameters for school committee meetings, just timing and all that kind of stuff. So a couple of other hands, Ms. McDonald?
Um, so I didn't have a meeting on my calendar for Monday. Is that Monday, March 4th at 6:00 PM?
It is, I thought that went out, but maybe not.
I think the, the draft went out. So these were the meetings that were, um, Dr. Morris had announced, uh, during the PowerPoint presentations around this, the MSBA process. So they weren't previous to that, but in, early January they were scheduled.
Okay. So we'll need to reschedule the, oh, the SEASOM committee.
Alicia, you're free. That's a better response than I was concerned about it two seconds ago, so, yeah.
Mr. Dumbling?
Um, meeting location, I thought we could, uh, follow up on, because we never made a sort of a choice.
I was gonna bring that up at the tail end of all this, but you, we can talk about it now.
Oh, okay, sure.
Yeah, um, so I, I think, you know, we just wanted to, I, I just wanted to check in with the committee and see, you know, any reactions to having our meeting at Town Hall. I think that was a difficult meeting because it was such a long meeting. Um, so hopefully we can separate those two things, because the two are not necessarily part and parcel. But just in general environment, uh, what was your feeling being there? Do we want to do it again? Ms. McDonald and then Mr. Dumbling?
Um, I actually liked the layout much better. I, I could see everybody's faces without having to lean forward or lean back, and, because we were parked sort of at that corner. So I just found it weirdly more intimate than, than this, um, environment for having conversations as a, as a group. Um, and, um, the chairs were more comfortable. That's not a reason to move.
Mr. Dumbling?
Uh, I thought it was a good length of meeting to put it through its paces. I mean, we got, we got a good taste of what it would be like.
That's true, yeah.
Right? Um, I mean, and, and so other than, uh, I might have to go to microphone class for a couple of weeks, you know, to work that little button. Um, yeah, I, I liked it a lot more than I, I thought it, I thought I would. And I actually got, got a chance to watch, um, another meeting, um, on, on the, the lives. The, so the streaming and the video quality there is
Much better.
It's much improved. And so just in terms of like, being out there for the community to easily, it's, transparency is really about ease of access, right? I mean, anybody can walk in here, right? But it's, it's a lot easier to sit home and watch it. It's, then it's a lot easier to sit home and watch it on a really nice, high-quality video feed or on, on any device or, so that has a lot of, of appeal for me. So, I mean, I would, given that, you know, we're certainly not moving the region meetings any, anytime soon, um, I would certainly be amenable to, uh, by default, having our, our Amherst meetings there.
Ms. Spitzer?
Just one question would be, um, about parking, um, both for us and for the public. I think that's the only accessibility issue that I have with that building is some, it's confusing. Some spots in Amherst are after 6:00, you have to pay, and some, um, end at 6:00, so.
Yeah.
I don't know how, how Town Council deals with it.
Yeah. It's a good point. I think, um, definitely something that I was thinking about, that I was confused about. I saw a couple of folks kind of go down this, the alleyway next to the Town Hall.
Yeah.
Is that a different parking? It is, okay.
It's a secret spot. You shouldn't say it too loud.
Okay, now I understand. Um, but yeah, I think parking is definitely an issue that, you know, uh, potentially. But, but at the same time, I would, I would also say that I think parking here can sometimes be an issue, uh, because everyone likes to park right here in the fire lane.
It's always free, you think.
It's free, that's true. Um, you know, but it can get crowded sometimes depending on what's going on. Dr. Morris?
Yeah, and just the, the flip side to that, I don't disagree with your, the point at all, is that in terms of access, in terms of bus routes and people who don't have their own transportation, it's wildly better than this site. This is not an easy site to get to if you do not drive a car. And I know
You're walking.
Right, you're, yeah, uh, yeah, you're walking some distance.
Quite, quite a distance, yeah.
Uh, in the winter. So, um, I, I think you can look at it either way. I think you're 100% right about the parking, but I don't, I don't want to pretend that this is the perfect venue in terms of access to community and frankly, just in terms of people knowing where it is, being downtown has some advantage of people generally knowing where Town Hall. If you have a young, like for an elementary meeting, where is the high school, even though we listed, thanks to Ms. Smollett for doing that, side entrance, right? We have actually a fair number of people, despite how well we describe it, like our attorney, who was here earlier tonight, who, it takes a while. And he was still, was on the wrong side of the building, he was over by the fields, and that's why he was like three minutes late. So I think it's, 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 it's less cut and dry for me about, you know, which is more accessible than another.
I'm wondering if, if the committee would be amenable to, uh, trying it out again, having another meeting there, um, as a school committee? And just, you know, give it a shot, maybe a shorter meeting, with our very strict rules in place of our engagement. Um, if maybe that might work. I see head nods. Okay, so we'll take a look and see if maybe, you know, uh, maybe even as soon as our next big meeting, we can, we can try that out. Okay, Mr. Nakajima, did you have?
Going back to the thing on the agenda.
Yeah.
Uh, are we, are we talking about doing math in April, then?
So one thing they'd like to follow up with the regional chair, when he's in the role of regional chair, is, is whether, since that's on the agenda for the next regional meeting, whether that could be the first item and perhaps made to be a joint item. Um, because Mr. Shuen will be back and he's gonna have a formal response and it's gonna be inclusive of sixth grade. So again, to the same point.